The board of trustees to order that the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:00 PM. If everyone would please stand as Mr. John Husbands leads us in the invocation and Mr. Dakar Williams in the pleasurable.
As we bow in prayer, let us keep in mind our neighbors to the north that have been suffering with the horrific weather, the damage to their communities. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we don't have to look very far from this room to know how blessed we are, these young people that represent the very best of the best of what we have. We are so thankful for them, we are thankful for the educators that teach them, we're thankful for the administration that so effectively manages this school district so that it can be a blessing to all. Father, we ask that you continue to remember us in all our decisions, give us the wisdom and the courage to make the right decision. We also ask that you give a special measure of comfort to our friends to the north and Oklahoma that are suffering loss of property and life and friends and family and children. Father, do us what you can only do in comforting them. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. Thank you, Mr. Husbands, thank you, Mr. Williams. Next item on the agenda is awards and recognition, the first robotics world championship, Texas Torque, Dr. Stockton.
It's gonna be an exciting meeting, I just, I just have a feeling. At this time, I want to invite Cheryl Heim, who's our coordinator, signs to the podium.
Mr. Sanders, members of the board and Dr. Stockton, the Texas Torque 1477 Robotics Team, which is made up of students from the Woodlands College Park High School, the Woodlands High School and Oak Ridge High School, was part of a three-team alliance that won the world championship title at the For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology First Robotics World Championship. It was held at the Edward Jones Dome in St. Louis, April 24th through 27th. The Conroe ISD team, along with two Canadian teams, Berry Six and the Coyotes, formed the Blue Alliance to compete with and win the world title. The competition began when first sent our teams a set of parts to build a robot within a six-week time period. The teams accomplished, competed and accomplished in regionals the opportunity to advance to finals. Four hundred teams from over fifteen countries made it to the national competition. These outstanding students have wonderful mentors who I am honored to introduce to you at this time. Please welcome to the podium, Mr. Scott Ripeto, who is a teacher at the Woodlands College Park High School, and the Woodlands High School teacher, Mr. Matt Davies.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize a couple other people that are here real quick, a couple other mentors that are with us this evening before we recognize the students. We have back here James Tom than, if you'll stand up real quick. James, our. Another person that's hiding back there, she's in charge of food, there's two of them actually, Mary Ann Booker and Rebecca Noran. There's a lot of other people that are responsible for our success, but most of it is the students, and so this is really about recognizing them. We did bring the robot up tonight so that you might be able to see a little bit about what a world championship robot looks like, so they'll take a moment to demonstrate what it does. The game this year was shooting frisbees. It's not going to shoot any frisbees, so you don't want to catch a frisbee from this So the lights, I always like pretty lights on the robot, but they serve a purpose also. The, when they were rainbow, it meant the robot was disabled. When it was yellow, it meant the air pressure was too low, so it couldn't do what it's supposed to do, and right now it's blue because we're Blue Alliance, that was the alliance we were when we won. Another thing that we could do that a lot of robots couldn't is we could pick up off the ground, so hopefully it'll pick up off the ground right now. You can, you can leave those. Dr. Stockton, you don't want to do that. One of the changes we made after the last regionals, we put new shooter wheels on there, so it shoots a lot harder than it used to. So anyway, this is another, I just want to share a quick story about the robot, and that is, it really is the kids that know all this stuff, because this afternoon and yesterday, we were having some problems with the elevator. The robot can elevate normally, it can't right now because there's an issue with one of the gearboxes. I didn't know what was wrong. Okay, the kids looked at it, spent maybe five minutes looking at it, and they figured out what was wrong and told me how long it would take to fix it and everything. I don't know that. The programming, I don't know that. You know, Tommy back there, he's, he's the lead programmer, and there's a team that works with him. I don't know what's going on with the program. I can help a little bit with the logic, but they know everything, and I think that's one of the reasons why they're so successful, is because the kids do run the team, and it makes our team a little bit different from some of the others, is how much they're involved, so.
Where did you start from?
Where did we start from?
Where did you start from? I mean, I see the infra.
Is there anything on that robot that didn't come in that box?
Pretty much everything on the robot doesn't come in the box. You, you're given motors, you're given the processor, it's called a C RIO, you're given, a lot of the electronics are specified, the ones that control the motors, the relays that are on there, those are all specified, the pneumatics, there's very stringent rules about what you can use for the pneumatics because of the danger involved with those. But, and then there's the weight, the robot can't weigh more than 120 pounds without the bumpers and stuff, when it's all weight, everything's on, it's about 150 pounds. The maximum height is set, and the perimeter is set to 112 inches this year, and that changes from year to year, so. The robot, the drive chassis is, kind of evolves over the, over time, so this drive chassis is similar to last year's drive chassis, which is kind of built on some things we learned from the previous year, so the wheels, that part's kind of set, but what you see above it, that's, that's all brand new just for this year. So we, we had no idea what it was going to be like until we solved the problem, but we had a pretty good idea what the drive chassis would look like. We have custom gearboxes on there, James is responsible for a lot of that, and anyway, so. Any other questions you want to ask? You're more than welcome to take a turn kind of driving if you want to try.
Can a kid diagnose cars that fast and fix them? I got a deal I need them to work on.
They don't have a clue about the car.
Mr. Ripeto, since it's still pointing at me, is it disarmed right now?
It's rainbow, so it's disabled, you're safe. So we have some students we'd like to recognize tonight, I think we'd like them to come up and get the certificate, so first, Austin Bay. Josh Baradon. Did Taylor not come? Oh, okay, well, you can, you can take both of them. Bryce Copen Quit. Copen Quits. Vikram Krishnan. Our team captain, Shom Ragavan. Our Frenchman, Arthur Sonier. Our Norwegian Henning Skow. Also with us tonight's another mentor, Connor McMahon.
Get that all in one shot. It's gonna be the national anthem in the key of C, okay, guys?
Let me congratulate all of you, you've made C I S D proud, and with your skills, you've gone a long way. If you know, every good group, successful team, is there because they had a good leader. So I want to recognize the leaders tonight. The Board of Trustees recognizes Matt Davies and Scott Ripeto, Texas Torque 2013 First Robotics World Champions, May 21st, 2013.
Texas Torque!
Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
I saw you on Tuesday, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job.
Scott, be sure and tell them where that's located.
I had a problem. Okay, I saw, yeah, I saw. Where's C J? Uh, she's Colorado. I think with her, city with her daughter.
Well, I thought that was another.
David Martell.
Is it maybe over there like tart?
David and I are a little mixed up.
Okay, I mean, he used to serve at the.
Well, that cleared it out, didn't it?
Yeah, it did.
Actually, we got Jessica. It's turning.
All right, I have to turn it down.
Up in the gun.
Can you give me a little more, I read the email and I've forgotten since I read it, what these kids have done, where they're from.
They've been in programs in freshman year, they've struggled in freshman year, they worked with the counselors, they, I think, lived on campus, they've been in other shifts to work, they have their very bases, they're graduating, Sherry's gonna share some information.
All right. Next item on the agenda is under awards recognition as special district recognition students together achieving results. It's our program, Dr. Stockton.
I'd like to invite Cherry Sunderman, who's our coordinator of guidance and counseling. Come to the podium, please, Mrs. Sunderman.
Mr. Sanders, members of the board and Dr. Stockton, in 2007, a new program called STAR, Students Together Achieving Results, was created. This May, we celebrate the fourth graduating class. These amazing students have touched the lives of those who have had the privilege of working with them. This group of graduates has participated in many activities, including the district ropes course, they've visited Lone Star North Harris, Texas A&amp;M, Texas A&amp;M Galveston, University of Houston Hilton College, Lynn, and Sam Houston State University. They've also participated in a career day at Lone Star Montgomery College. Captains, counselors meet with these students on a regular basis, and I'm A. Villarreal, I'm A. Ray. Our district college readiness specialist has organized this special event and met with the counselors to plan future activities. Due to all the activities that are going on at this time of year, not all the counselors could be here tonight, but they wanted these students to know that they were here in spirit with them. An exit survey conducted with this graduating group has given us the following information. Ninety-four percent have currently passed all sections of tax. Seventy-eight percent are first-generation students. Eighty-eight percent report that the program has given them the opportunity to get to know adults on their campus. Seventy-eight percent said in eighth grade, they thought they could go to college. Those who didn't said they thought they couldn't afford college, they didn't know what they wanted to do, or they just didn't think they could do it. When asked how their view of their future has changed, some of the answers were, I now have a clearer picture of what I want to do, I am now more dedicated and more interested. STAR has helped me to move on. I now make good decisions, I got my act together, everything has changed, it's good for me. I thought college wouldn't be out of my, I couldn't, would be out of my budget, but now I know I can do it. Even though I have a child, I've kept my goals. I've learned that we have choices. Careers in which they are interested are architecture, cosmetology, international business, nursing, art, an English teacher, an elementary teacher, gaming design, pastry chef, baby seals, photography, criminal justice, and just like our other students, their plans after high school are to-year college, four-year college, technical school, military, or work. About four years ago, Mrs. Villarreal and I got the opportunity to present our program to a group called the Texas Consortium of School Research, and they've been helping us do research, see how effective our program is. Hot off the press, just in today, I'm happy to share some information with you. They found significant findings for referrals in 2011 in favor of our program students, more referrals for, for the comparison students than more the kids in the program. Significant findings for tax, exit reading, math, and science in favor of our program students. Significant findings in GPA in 2009, 2011, 2012 in favor of our program students. Significant findings for referrals and credits in 2012 in favor of the program students, more referrals for our comparison students. So now we know we're on the right track, and we're continuing to work toward that. We are so proud of this group of young men and women. Tonight, we have two speakers who would like to speak on behalf of the group. After they speak, our students will be introduced by the representatives from the campuses. From Candy Creek High School, Diane Hernandez, from Conroe High School, Kay Roberts, from Hawk High School, Sigrid Woods, Oak Ridge High School, Mary Lou Harbin, Woodlands College Park High School, A.J. Levicki, and Woodlands High School, Paulette Nelson. Our speakers this evening are Savannah Thomason from Oak Ridge High School and Tracy McCaffrey from Candy Creek High School, and I'd like to call them to the mic now. First of all, Savannah.
My name is Savannah Thomason, and I am here to tell you how STAR has impacted my life. I was very excited when Ms. Costas asked me if I was interested in joining this program my freshman year. My sophomore year, I kind of got off track and wasn't caring about school, didn't get into college, and basically already had senior high. But all of my counselors in the STAR program did whatever they could to get me back on track, went and toured Lone Star Montgomery, and that's when it got exciting. I was ready for college, and I was so excited to go, I have, I have always wanted to become a teacher, and so that's what I was determined to do. My junior year hit, I was pregnant, and found myself asking how I'm going to do, how am I going to make it through high school and college with me. With the encouragement of Ms. Algais, Ms. Berry, Ms. Costas, and Ms. Reed, I got through junior year just fine, passed all my tax tests with flying colors. Now my senior year, it has been very hard to maintain my grades and get my credits to graduate with my classmates, but Ms. Harbin and Ms. Stokes have done so much to help me through it, they have had speakers come talk to us about how to get in school even with faith, the STAR program has shown me how many different opportunities there are for me and my education after high. To me, the STAR program is a chance to get an extra inside look on the college experience, an extra opportunity to learn about the different colleges and what each one has to offer.
And now Ms. Tracy McCaffrey from Candy Creek.
I'm Tracy McCaffrey, and I've been in STAR since my freshman year. It truly has been an eye-opener for me. When they first asked me if I would like to be in the program, I honestly didn't know what it was. I figured it was just something to get out of the class. STAR has shown me many different colleges and career choices that would be good for my future. Being in the program has shown me that you can go out into the world and make something of yourself. For STAR, to be honest, I didn't think about college. I told my parents I would go, just to make them happy, but I didn't feel like I wanted to. I really enjoy STAR, and it helps me pick out the college I'm going to. I'm gonna start in Lone Star this fall into going into nursing, be an ultrasound technician. STAR's program has truly made a difference to me. I would like to thank all of you administrators, teachers, counselors, and leaders for letting us have this program. It has made an impact in many of our lives. We may not show it a lot, and we may not appreciate it, but we all like to say thank So on behalf of the class of 2013, thank you all for letting this program be part of our lives, and hopefully this program will continue. Thank you.
Okay, our first STAR member from Candy Creek High School is Anthony Garcia. And then we have Cody Lawrence. And next, we have Megan Legendran. And finally, Tracy McCaffrey.
And finally, Tracy McCaffrey.
Hello. We have two representatives from Conroe High School this evening. The first one is Johnny Gayaga. So, so cute. And the next young man is Omar Lopez.
From Hawk Academic Alternative High School, we have two STAR students, Jeffrey Hilton. And we also have Nancy Santa Maria.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lou Harbin, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board for caring for our kids and allocating funds and all your time and hard work to making these our future successful group of students here. From Oak Ridge High School, we have Darius Johnson, who plans to be an electrician. And next we have Savannah Thomason, and she plans to be a sound ultrasound technician.
From the Woodlands College Park High School, Alexandra Foss.
It's with great honor that I present two of the STAR students from the Woodlands High School, Kim Tercios. She has shared with me that she plans to go to Lone Star and then transfer to View of H to become a teacher. The next student is Darius Ford. And Darius, Darius is planning to go into Navy SEALs, so congratulations.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I just realized that I taught three of you guys when you were in junior high. And I knew back then that you guys would be successful, and I'm so proud of you for being here today. So congratulations, guys, on all your hard work, and may your futures be as bright as the sun.
Congratulations. John, proud of you, sir.
Proud of you.
Proud of you. You did a very good job. I wish you the best of luck. John, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Good job.
Good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you. Good luck to you. Good luck to you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck to you. You look very nice.
Good luck to you. Did a good job.
Good job.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you, sir. Good luck to John. Love.
Good luck to your baby.
John, good luck to me. I can get you back a lot.
Good luck to you.
All right.
One moment. We would like to invite the parents of our STAR students to join us in the large conference room right around the corner for some refreshments.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, awards and recognition, item C, special district recognition, child nutrition ambassador awards. Dr. Stockton.
I'd like to invite Robert Hughes, who's our interim director of child nutrition, to the podium.
Mr. Sanders, members of the board and Dr. Stockton. I would like to thank the board for allowing me to recognize our employees tonight for the ambassador awards. Our first award goes to Miaun Kugel from Irons Junior High Cafeteria. Miaun has been with the district four years. She comes to work every morning with a smile. She takes pride in her work and is always willing to help where needed. She's truly an asset to CISD. Our next.
Stand right up here.
Our next award goes to Maria Villa Cressis from Darachin Elementary Cafeteria. Maria has been an employee for four years and has moved into a management position this year with her positive attitude and eagerness to work. We're so happy to have Maria on our team. Thank you.
You haven't sung your solos yet.
Congratulations.
That's right. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
For all your hard work. Thank you for all you do.
All right, awards and recognition, item D, special district recognition, transportation ambassador awards. Dr. Stockton.
I'd like to invite Mr. Sam Davala, Director of Transportation, to the podium to make the announcements.
Mr. Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity today to present these fine employees for their recognition. We like to call it the extra mile award since they go that extra mile on the school buses to make sure our students are served. These employees have demonstrated such professionalism and outstanding attendance and just being able to be there for our students. And seeing all the students today that was recognized, it just makes us all proud that we're a part of that to make sure that these students get the education and get to school and get to the trips where they need to go. Without ado, Jackie Money, Declan. Jackie's our operations specialist at the Woodlands Transportation Center. Don't let the cane pull you. She drives, she does everything whenever we need it, Jackie's there. Lacey Austin. Lacey was one of our trainers, and she was recently promoted to secretary. So she has a hands full. Norma Fives. Norma Fives is our training coordinator, so every bus driver, every coach that comes through our training department sees Norma at some point. She makes sure that they're well-trained and they're ready to drive those buses. Vicky Acosta. Vicky's one of our drivers at our Conroe Transportation Center, and she's always there. Whenever she's needed, she's always there to help the supervisors and make sure that our students are picked up. And George Vincent. George is one of our drivers from the Woodland Transportation Center, and I'm sorry to say that I didn't recognize him at first. I don't always get to get out and see all of our employees, but they're always doing such wonderful things. And he's making sure, he had an incident on one of his routes, and he did the right thing to make sure that there was actually a worker on the side of the road that didn't get hurt. He was attentive at what he was doing, and that's what makes our folks so great.
If you'll turn this way. Thank you for all that you do.
Thanks again.
So much love.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Good job.
Thank you for all you do. I appreciate you. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. I'm really glad. Great job. You, appreciate you, sir. Good job, sir.
Good start to the meeting.
Item E is citizen participation. Ms. Paris, is anyone registered to address the board? All right. To continue on to the consent agenda, I would like to remove item F from that agenda at this time. I have a conflict of interest due to my employer being one of the bidders, and so I will not participate in the discussion nor the vote of item F. So removing item F from the consent agenda. Does anyone else have any additional items that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Not, all those in favor? And all opposed? Right?
All right. We'll be bringing item 3F due to our president's abstention. It's the bank depository. Dr. Stockton.
Anything?
Nothing.
Does anybody have any discussion? Seeing that none is necessary, all those in favor, signal by raising that hand. All those opposed? And one of the stick. And secretary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hosmans, we appreciate that. All right, item four, administration, A, approval of the Ann K. Snyder Elementary School mascot. Dr. Stockton.
I will ask Dr. Kathy Gibson to come to the podium to present this item for your decision.
Good evening, President Sanders, board members, and Dr. Stockton. Mascot nominations were presented for Ann K. Snyder Elementary School. The board has trusted these as an information item at the April 16th meeting. We are now asking that the board approve a mascot for the Ann K. Snyder Elementary School. We have two nominations. One is for the actual mascot is scholars, and the other is stallions. And we have two different color schemes for you. We have the green and gold in each one of these nominations. And we also have red and blue, which also matches the school colors. We're asking you this evening to approve a mascot for Ann K. Snyder Elementary School.
President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Snyder Elementary School stallions in red and blue.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? And all those opposed? All right, motion carries. Item 4B, color boards for Flex School 14 and Flex School 16. Dr. Stockton.
I will, before I introduce that item, I'll point out that Principal Lindsay Ardwan is in the audience. So you have a mascot now? I'll ask Easy Foster to come to the podium to introduce that item.
Evening, President Stockton, or President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. I want to invite Ian Powell, partner with PBK, to present the colors for Flex Schools number 14, number 16, which are currently under construction.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Sanders, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It's our pleasure to be here tonight to present the interior color selections that we arrived at through several meetings, Dr. Stockton, Dr. Gibson, others from administrative staff. So cutting right to the chase, these are the elevations they described for both Flex 14 and Flex 16. One thing I will point out, this is the school in which in prior action, you are authorized placing the library access off of the commons area, which has been changed in prior schools. This is the patterning for the walls in the serving area of the kitchen. This is a section cut to the library area, showing how the colors would be applied on the walls and acoustical panels in the high ceiling areas. The classroom court elevation is described below that. Orchestra, fine arts, and bandroom elevations, describing the continuation of the color scheme to the building as well as in the azim and eating place space. Door patterns are also part of the things that are reviewed and looked at. An opportunity to provide sort of a splash of color and variety in the school. Most of it concentrates within the commons area and the cafeteria space. Shows the extension of tile throughout the building. Door patterns for the final tile within the fine arts and music spaces in clinic. Restrooms showing both floor patterns as well as wall patterns. Got to answer any questions you have?
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. All right. Item 4C, approval of GMP plumbing repairs at Conroe High School. Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Foster, I'd like to come back to the podium.
Good evening. President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. I am bringing forward tonight for your approval, plumbing repairs at Conroe High School. Included in the board package this week, a memo explaining how we arrived at this issue and what we need to do to fix it. Magnus has alerted us to an issue that is beyond their capability of repair. We investigated. We have determined what the best perspective of repairing is. We anticipate the crookstone construction starting that work this summer. The budgeted amount is $697,400. Funding for these repairs comes from the 2008 bond reference.
Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Prove any discussion. I just had a question. My understanding is the pipeline was from 1964, so it held up pretty good. I mean, I guess.
Yeah, and just I have 50 years, which is a reasonable life expectancy.
I would agree. Okay, all right. Just wanted to make that comment.
So why is it $700,000? We're going to bust out concrete through the Tiger Den?
We are not busting out very much. We've elected, and I brought a sample with me, of a method of rebuilding the pipe from the inside out. Because we found some, through some video investigation, found some damages to the pipe in a specific area. And we found a company can clean those pipes out mechanically, remove any obstruction, and then rebuild the pipe from the inside out. We'd like to see a sample. I have one last round, but it's not a small. It's rather heavy, so I'd be happy to show you now or following.
It's curious, how do you do it? Show them.
Since you asked.
Understand this what city of Conroe is running under the streets to fix the sewer pipe.
All right, it is, this is a representation of the finished product. The process is, I mean, much similar to how I investigated. A tractor-mounted mechanical cutter actually mechanically moves through the pipe, removes structures, roots, debris, anywhere pipes are misaligned. It cuts the earth and pipe out of the way to make a smooth passage. This material is then mechanically inserted through the pipe as well. The bladder on the inside is inflated with air and water to 1,600, that's 1,600 PSI. And that inflates everything. And then the fabric is saturated with the resin material. So we end up with a fiberglass reinforced resin that is the inside of the pipe. And then once the bladder is removed, you end up with a nice structure in play.
All right, any other discussion coming?
Bet our kids could have done that. Is that a little robot that goes through that line?
What's the life expectancy for the new deal there?
With, assuming the earth doesn't move and damage the pipe, I mean, it should get us another 30, 40, 50. With, assuming the earth doesn't move and damage the pipe, I mean, it should give us another, you know, 30, 40, 50.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
By the way, that wasn't a model we hired to show you the pipe?
I was requesting your face.
All right, item four D, approval of HVAC upgrades, Dr. Stockton.
Foster. Again, President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, I bring for your approval tonight HVAC upgrades, which is heating, ventilation and cooling upgrades to several campuses to be done this summer. Specifically at Vogel Intermediate, we're going to update the valves and controls for the air conditioning systems there. At Conroe High School, we are replacing a boiler that is at the end of its useful service life. At Canyon Creek High School, we are doing some work to install isolation valves in preparation for chiller replacements later in the year. At that time or this summer, we are actually, we are also going to flush the piping for the mechanical system. And doing the valves now allows us to flush now, so we're not rushed to do chiller replacements later. The work here will include plumbing, fire protection, asbestos removal, temporary air conditioning testing balancing and all the ancillary items associated with it. The budget is $709,392 and the funding is from the 2008 bond referendum.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments? All right, if not, all those in favor? And all those opposed? Motion carries. Item four E, bond referendum update, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Foster, I'll ask you to present the last item.
Again, President Sanders, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, this is our update for the current projects under construction within the 2008 bond referendum. Starting with Conroe High School ninth grade campus. This project is approximately 50% complete. It will be open for school this summer. It is currently on schedule. The exterior brickwork is approximately 70% complete. The critical path for this particular job is gymnasium remodels. The flooring is going in, the air conditioning systems are active and that is proceeding as planned. The finishes are beginning, as you can see some water on the floor here, the windows are coming, falling, the meshing. Moving along to Ann K Snyder Elementary School, this project is very near completion. It is scheduled for opening this summer. The administration turns over to Conroe High School to move in furniture on the week of June the 10th. The classrooms are scheduled to receive their furniture and move in on the week of July the 10th.
Go State.
Yes, sir. As you can see, the red and blue color scheme is a good selection for the mascot. The finishes and furniture, our library furnishings are coming together well. At John V. Pete Junior High School, this project is also nearing completion. It is scheduled to open this summer.
I'm going to tell you something people won't shut up about this school right here. They are all, I mean, they are bragging about it big time, how beautiful it is.
I had an opportunity about two weeks ago to take Dr. Pete on a tour of his school and he was speechless.
He got an upgrade.
Got a new school.
New school, new school, sorry.
Again, it is nearing completion. It is scheduled to open this summer. The admin areas like Snyder are scheduled to receive their furniture the week of June the 10th. The classrooms are scheduled to receive their furniture the weeks of July the 10th. It's in much the same condition. The finishes are coming together, the air conditioning systems are running. It is in its wind down cleanup mode.
Have we dealt with the kids not wanting to leave there and go back to the other school or high school? Is it so nice?
Well, I can tell you, I'm not in charge of students.
Moving around. Going to play for that, easy.
Moving to Flex School number 14, this school is scheduled to open in August of 2014. It is on schedule. They are erecting structural steel currently.
Remind me which one's 14 and which one's 15?
Flex School number 14 is on the east side of Conroe, right next door to Bosman Intermediate. 15 is Snyder Elementary. So we're not building them in order. We are erecting structural steel. The CMU, the concrete block masonry work is in progress. The air conditioning systems are beginning their rough end. They are being installed and protected. Other infrastructure items are going in place, so it is on schedule and right where we need it to be. Flex School number 16, which is in the Wood Forest Development. It is on schedule. It's scheduled to open in August of 2014. Again, they are also erecting structural steel. And it is proceeding, it is on schedule. 14 and 16 started together. 14 had a head start because it was actually started in 2008, so the infrastructure was already in place. But they are both proceeding as planned. Yes, sir.
I don't ask this question out of alarm. I just was asked this question a couple of times this week since our last couple of days and what are our roof wind resistance designed for? 90, 100, 140, do you know?
That is a detail I don't carry around with me regularly.
Fair enough.
Ian, do you have that?
It's another time. I know it's not 200 or 300, that makes it no, don't worry.
In this area, there's a stipulation that says it's designed to be in the Henry County area. Those wind uplift and they're off.
All right, other questions or comments? Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Item five, business and finance, A, bond sale, series 2013A, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Cox, if you'll come present this item or introduce our presenters.
President Sanders, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. I'm here tonight to recommend the Board of Trustees approve the order authorizing the issuance of Conroe Independent School District Unlimited Tax Bonds. The new bond sale portion of this bond sale is 16 million from the 2008 bond referendum. This bond sale will provide the equipment and furnishings for the schools that you just saw that are currently under construction. Will also provide auxiliary improvements, lifecycle replacement projects, technology, land purchases, buses. In addition, we're doing a refunding and Ryan O'Hara with BOSC, our financial advisor, is here tonight to present some information on the refund.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Dr. Stockton, members of the board, again, Ryan O'Hara with BOSC, financial advisor of the district. For those of you on the investment committee, this presentation is going to be very similar to what we had a few days ago, so again, to recap, we are looking at 16 million in new money for projects. But the bulk of this is refinancing opportunity and we're looking to do it in two pieces and I'll walk you through that. Page one is simply an overview of the tax exempt bond market. The blue line represents where AA GO issues are across the country. You can see, following the sequestration and debt ceiling issues at the beginning of the year, rates went up. But we've been enjoying a nice rally. Currently we're at 3.61 and rallying even till today. So I think we're entering a good phase in the bond market. This is a comparison of taxable rates versus tax exempt rates. We typically issue tax exempt bonds. You can kind of see the separation, the red line represents the 10-year US Treasury, which is a taxable. And then the blue line is simply a 10-year of that chart that we saw before, which is a AAA tax exempt. You see back in 2005, 6 and 7, that was a traditional shape of those two curves. However, today, slide over to the right, look where we are in 2013. Those, the tax exempt and taxable markets are on top of each other. Rates are so low that they've dropped us down. So it's a very interesting time in our markets where the demand actually for taxable, quality taxable investments is very high. Taxable market is actually about five times bigger than the tax exempt market because tax exempt people that are under the US tax code are the only players in that. So there's actually been some instances in the market where we've seen AAA permit school fund bonds like is what we'll be issuing. We've actually done better as a taxable, so it's very interesting. And I'll get into the reasons why we're going to be doing a taxable piece. We're going to be doing part of this, about 46 million, 46 million three is a tax exempt piece. We've got bonds from the '03 issue, '04A, '05A and '06. These bonds are out at an average interest rate of roughly 4.965%. And in today's market, we can take that down to a 2.53, including all costs. Next page over is taxable piece. The beauty of a taxable piece is we don't have to adhere to the owner's tax laws. You'll look at the definitions of these two series of bonds are unlimited tax refunding bonds, series 2005A and unlimited tax building and refunding bonds, series 2006. Tax law basically says you've got to be within 90 days of the call dates if we want to do tax exempt bonds. The call dates on these are in 2015 and 16, so we're doing them as a taxable and we're looking at roughly $57.2 million in those bonds. This is kind of where, a lot of numbers on this page, but the left-hand column shows all the outstanding indebtedness for the district. Next column overlooks the bonds that were actually the taxable and the tax exempt bonds. We're actually looking at refinancing the principal and interest for each of those pieces and slide over to the right and we're looking at $8.6 million in savings overall. You can see in 2014, we're looking at roughly $420,000 in savings and then roughly $580,000 to $585,000 in years 14, I'm sorry, 15, out to 2028. Again, 8.6 million, inclusive of all costs of issuing and testament. This is the calendar that we're trying to adhere to. We'll begin working on the plumery official statement, which is the document that tells the story of the district as well as this financing. We'll be talking with the rating agencies, week of the June 17th. Working on our permit school fund application with the state. Again, that gives us the AAA status. We'll be looking to price the week of July the 8th and hopefully close the week of July 29th. And what we're asking for your approval tonight is a permit order that allows us the flexibility to go forward, enter the market. We can go faster or slower, but this is kind of an outline of where we think we're going to be. I think we've done permit orders the last four, five years or so.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or question? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? All opposed?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Item 5B, financial reports, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Rice, if you'll come present those reports.
Good evening, President Sanders, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. Tonight I'm here to present the financial statements for the district, month of April. These statements will include the general fund, debt service, child nutrition and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at is our balance sheet for the district for the month. Balance sheet shows our assets, liabilities and fund balances. We always like to look at our cash, our just stupid asset we have there. So as you can see, it's all invested in our pools. Always like to track our property taxes and compare where we've been in the past and make sure we're still on that target. We're almost right, identical with that. So what you'll see is our projections of fund balance. In the slides, we've taken that into account. The next statement is the income statement, shows our revenues and expenditures. Looking at our local revenues and the general fund and debt service fund, you can see the majority of those are in our taxes. Food services from sales and self-funded is from premium contributions. And we want to look at our total expenditures at the functional level. We can see that in general fund, majority of our expenses is in the instructional area. Debt service fund, service, child nutrition, food and self-funded for plan expenses. As I said, general fund balance, if you look, we're projecting a slight decrease in the fund balance. Last month, we had about a $13 million increase projected. Now it's taken into account. Still will be able to move the $16 million to the debt service fund, so we see just a slight decrease in fund balance there. Now debt service fund last month, we had about a $19.9 million decrease in that fund. Now with that $16 million coming over, we've got about a child nutrition remains the same. Self-funded insurance for the month of April, we had $2.35 million in revenues, $2.78 million in expenses for revenues under expenses of $427,000 for the year. That gives us total revenues of $21.8 million, expenses of $21.4 million, or positive balance of $402,000. That includes the premium. For our Wellness and Health Center, we had 515 participants in April, giving us an average of about 600. Our 2008 bond referendum, we've currently sold $441 million of our $527 million bond referendum. We've currently expended and encumbered $429 million of that. We're estimating about $26 million left to complete. That'll give us a projected forecast to complete our bond program of $455 million, leaving us with a contingency available of about $72 million of our $527 million bond referendum. Our investments, at the end of March, we were at $383 million. At the end of April, $353 million. The average maturity, district is one day, our pools is eight days. Build the maturity 0.0996, our benchmark, which is the 90-day T-bill, 0.05.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe there's no executive session tonight, so no action needed for executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We have a motion second. All in favor? All opposed, you can stay.